Father, we thank you for this day in the city and with me live, guidance as after members would make our decisions. I mean. This is the regular meeting of the Newnan City Council, February the 11th, 2020. You have the minutes for the work session of Noon and Entertainment and Sports Project, January 28th, 2020. Before y'all entertain a motion to adopt those minutes.
So moved.
Motion is second. We adopt those minutes as presented. All those in favor, pose, motion carried. Ms. Jenkins, I understand you have a correction on minutes with the regular meeting of January 28th.
I do. Under appointments on tree commission, it has my name there, but I wasn't the one. It was Councilman Greco.
All right. So that's a motion we make that to adopt the minutes with that correction. Second. All right. Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor, pose, motion carried. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda, this is an appointment to the Newland Cultural Arts Commission, the replacement of Joanna Harvey, term to expire of 6/21. I'm Mr. Greco.
I'm still waiting for a reply, so put that on the next one, please.
All right. Thank you. Then the next item on the agenda, there are two appointments to the pre-commission. The first one is mine, and I'd like to place a nomination, the name of J.R. Roberts of 86 Medallion Park in Newnan.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor, pose, carry. Thank you. Mr. Greco, you also have a tree commission.
On the next agenda, please.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda today is of the Board of Zoning Appeals. This is their annual report. He's done on the higher.
Doing well, thank you. Chairman Smith asked if I would give the report on behalf of the Board of Zoning Appeals today.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. As you can see, our Board of Zoning Appeals is a seven-member board. Cliff Chip Smith is the chairman, and the vice chairman is Willie Walton. He was recently appointed to that position this year. In terms of activities for 2019, we had 11 variances that we worked with, seven special exceptions, and one appeal of the zoning administrator's decision. And typically, that will be where somebody's had a grandfathered use, that they've been trying actively to sell or something along those lines, but the six months for somebody actually in the area or in the business has ran out, and so they asked the Board of Zoning Appeals to continue to allow them to have that use as opposed to it changing. As far as activities over the last five years, as you can see, the variances have gone down a little bit, special exceptions ran fairly the same, and then the appeals are always pretty low. I think, though, that the variances have come down because in 2018, we put the provision for the administrative variance, and this year, we had 20 administrative variances that were processed, 12 for setback variances, which are mostly like a foot or two or a few inches, which is better for it to be administrative, we think, than go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for all those. Five stream buffers, where we've had lots existing of records, and where we put in the new regulations that there would be no way they'd be able to be built on if we impose the new buffers and so forth that were in place, so they can go back and work with engineering on that. And then three on living space, where the house that would be required would be much more than what is the characteristic of that neighborhood. In terms of future things that they would like to discuss, one would be, we're working on updating the landscape ordinance, so we'd like some type of appeal process for that. And then after the training they had jointly, many of them attended with you all and the planning commission, they'd like to see some additional BZA training. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those.
The reporting questions for the council.
I'm just curious on the landscape ordinance appeal, is that residential, commercial, or everything?
We're still developing that, but probably it would be for any of those of love.
So you are going to develop that and get back to us, do that?
It would be, Mr.?
Yeah, we met with Forester Consulting, that's helped us with the landscape ordinance for anyway, actually yesterday. We've got some really good direction, and it was his recommendation. Obviously, this is our only development standard, and it does not establish an appeal process in the ordinance, so we certainly want to do that. We're also addressing things like alternative compliance options in the ordinance. Actually, we're going to, the tree ordinance is about 22 years old right now, and law has changed in that for over 22 years. So it's going to be pretty exciting, I think, to bring some changes to reflect, you know, both the quality and size that we have in our community for tree preservation of our canopy, but also having quality development and also in a stream line process. So we've got some good ideas from the Forester consultant, just like Mr. Craver and I said in there, so looking forward to getting that in front of you here pretty soon.
So the tree commission will also be involved?
Well, what we're going to be doing with the alternative compliance, we will be involving the tree commission as the review body for alternative compliance.
Okay.
So the responsibilities of the tree commission is going to increase substantially if council decides to go that route and adopt that ordinance as proof. So what that's going to do is, you don't always have a one-size-fits-all and a tree preservation landscaping requirement, so if a site comes in with unusual characteristics and can't just meet the letter of the law, instead of quote-unquote variance process, there's an alternative compliance mechanism that you present to the tree commission for approval.
Right.
So that's some processes that we're going to put into play, or recommend put into play, according to your decision.
Hey, one other quick thing is, I'm encouraged they're requesting more training as well. Is there training available through GMA or some other source? I don't know if y'all even started looking at that yet, but...
There is training available, and it comes from DCA and different groups, so when I see training that comes through from those organizations, I'll forward them onto my planning commission and see if they're interested in going.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir. And to follow up on that question, are there any other avenues we can look into training for the BZA besides GMA or?
We could always ask somebody to come in if you all want to do that at some point in the future.
Well, if it's worthwhile, we could offer that.
Yes.
I know it's tough to get some of the good quality.
We've also, I'm sorry, we have also had some of our commissioners that have piggybacked on other trainings that were offered by other communities as well, so we try to do that when that's available.
Just kind of going back, just, is that all just planning, or is that planning BZA?
This is for the BZA specifically. Planning just went through that, but again, BZA couple, you know, jumped in as well, so... But we always look at avenues for all our commissions, if they're available, to be trained.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you for the call. Okay. Ms. Phillips, you have anything to add?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
I don't, I don't have anything today. Under new businesses, it's authorized, Mayor, to execute the service delivery strategy amendment to include housing as a service. You have this amendment in front of you. There's a motion in second to authorize me to sign this document. Any discussion? All those in favor, pose, motion carried. Thank you. The next is MEAG Power Cell of excess reserve capacity to the city of Newnan on behalf of City Lee's Point. We have this before you. This is your standard of what we've done many times.
Second.
There's a motion is second to approve as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor, pose, motion carried. The next is city council to consider revision to include pedestrian path system in the residential development known as Parks at Olmsted. Got this before you, Ms. Smith, how you?
Fine. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Hopefully, it's fairly self-explanatory, but as you recall, and as the report outlines, early in 2000, this body looked at the Parks at Olmsted and approved the variance to deviate from what was traditional pedestrian sidewalks in many of our subdivisions, and allow an alternative system which would require paths that now go in the backs of people's residences as well as off the road. Well, in the intervening years, there's been a number of issues that have been brought to the city's attention. Mr. Lindsay of Olmsted LLC is here this afternoon. If you have any questions of him specifically. But in meeting with the city, with our engineering department, with planning department, as well as HOA representatives, we have now come up with a desire to try to move some of these pedestrian systems back onto the right-of-way. You have before you an alternate plan, which has been developed in concert with the engineering department as well. This path proposes to be concrete, and we're asking for you to approve this since this body initially approved the variance to deviate from sidewalks originally. I would add that, as I said, staff has reviewed it, and we recommend approval.
Do you have any questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion to approve is presented. Any discussion? All those in favor, pose, motion carried.
Thank you.
The next is Newnan City Council may consider a facility between City of Newnan and Holistic Stress Control Institute aim for the provision of administrative service space to provide support of substance abuse prevention and programming at 55 Savannah Street. Mr. Gray?
Mayor Brady, members of the council, I'm here to present this facilities use agreement for holistic stress control. As you may recall, they came to us the end of last year. This is the lease agreement to occupy spaces highlighted here in the visual, and again in your packet. One point I'd like to bring to your attention, we can just change in number two under the term from April 1, 2020 to April 1, 2021, change the 2nd April to March 31st, so in fact, it is a year, not a year and a day, so...
Some move with the correction?
Second. All right. Motion is second on the correction. Any discussion? All those in favor? Are we all voting on the correction? All those in favor, pose, motion carried. Oh, you mean you wanted to approve with the correction?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I thought I went. All right. If you said it like that, it was a motion to correct. Okay. All right. Okay. All right. So we did vote on it as a motion to correct, because that's what I asked you to do. Now we'll go back and look at the agreement.
Yes.
The question I have is, this is for you, for the youth, will it be adults also, or?
No, the program will target youth and young adults ages nine to 20 years old.
Okay. Thank you.
I think it is important to note, Councilman Alexander, that no youth will be served in the building.
Correct.
Instead, it's adults there that are training, adults who then go provide services where the youth are.
Where, yes.
Correct.
Okay. We have a corrective proposal here. Is there?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor, pose, motion carried. Thank you. Appreciate you being here and your service. Thank you. The next is 68 Savannah Street, set on schedule a public hearing for March 24th, 2020.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. Yes, this is a property that's actually this and the next one, 62 Murray Street, are both properties that have been, have suffered fire damage recently, and we're requesting a public hearing for March 24th.
All right. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion is second. We set the public hearing for 68 Savannah Street on March 24th. Any discussion? All those in favor? Pose, motion carried. And you're still up with 62 Murray Street, the same type?
Yes, same, same, same thing. Same, fire damage, and we're requesting a public hearing on March 24th.
Your motion?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Pose, motion carried. The next is a consideration of exercising ordinance amendment to chapter three alcohol beverages code of ordinances for certain city-sponsored events. Mr. Gray?
Mayor Brady, members of the council, this has become customary over the past few years, where Main Street program presents the list of events to this body. In addition, upon the amendment to chapter three, the vote today would consider allowing for alcoholic beverages at Greenville Street Park for certain events as they're listed in your packet, as well as within the district shown in the visual above.
Any questions, staff? Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We approve the request as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor? Pose, motion carried. Thank you. The next is also a Main Street request for street closures and to use sidewalks and parking spaces around the Court Square for the 2020 events. So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor? Pose, motion carried. The next is surplus property declaration disposition of real property, capital assets, and controlled assets. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We approve as presented. Any discussion?
I do. The Rose Street Parcels, is that land that we're talking about?
Yes, you may recall, we had some previous discussions on the Rose Street Parcels. They're very small strips that are basically separating the right-of-way, the access city, and the parcels. There's, the only benefit really of these particular parcels are to the adjoining property owners. And we have had a request, which I can't remember which of the three parcels, purchased one of the parcels. If they, at the request, they reimbursed us for surveying other costs. So we're just putting those on there, see if you want to dispose of them. They're of no benefit to us. They're not usable. The only thing we would be asking in the purchase, when the property owner purchases it, is that they actually would have to maintain, there's a utility easement on the property.
I see.
But unlike properties, and we've done this in the past, where we have a small sliver that is only of benefit to one property, we made a determination that we won't put that out in the public, option to be offered directly to those particular property. And that's what that particular deed is.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? All those in favor? Pose. Motion carried. Thank you. The next is a public hearing. That's an application for special permitted event venue. Keely Kirby Events LLC deviate something special at Living Gardens. This is, the reason for this is adding on premise beer and wine to an existing special permitted location license. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing for Simon, ask if there's anyone here that would like to come forward and speak to the issue. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing. Is everything in order? It is. I'll ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second on the issue. Is there a representative here today for Living Gardens? Thank you for being here. Appreciate that. Call the question. All those in favor? Pose. Motion carried. Thank you for being here. The next item on the agenda is also a public hearing for application of alcohol beverage license. This is Leonardo's Restaurant, deviate Grayson Steak and Seafood, located at 91 Millard Farmer Boulevard. The reason for this is a new business. This is a public hearing on this, and I'll open at this time. Is anyone here that would like to come forward and speak to the issue? Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. I understand there is a representative here today from Grayson's Steak and Seafood. Is everything in order? I'll ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, approved. Any discussion? All those in favor? Pose. Motion carried. The next is also a public hearing for application of alcohol license. This is a transfer for retail off-premise packaged sales malt beverages and wine for 10 to crescent. The reason is new owners, and I'll open a public hearing at this time and ask if there's anyone here that would like to come forward and speak to the issue. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there someone here today representing? Thank you for being here today, sir. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We approve the application as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor? Pose. Motion carried. The next is also a public hearing, application of alcohol beverage license. This is a transfer of the license representative for 487 Jackson Street. The reason for this is a personnel change, and this is the Little Giant Farmer Market. I'll open a public hearing at this time. Is anyone here that would like to come forward to speak to the issue? Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there someone here today representing Little Giant? Located at 487 Jackson Street. No one here representing Little Giant? Last time, anyone here representing Little Giant? Stella, will you put this on our next agenda, please? We'll move on to the next item on the agenda. This is also a public hearing, the application of alcohol beverage license transfer owner. This is Galata Grill, retail on premise, point sales of distilled spirits, malt beverages and wine. 45 Noonan Station Drive, Suite C. The reason for this is a new owner. This is a public hearing on this issue. Is there anyone here that would like to come forward to speak to the issue? Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. Is there someone here today representing? Thank you for being here today. I appreciate that. Is everything in order? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion is second. We approve. Any discussion? All those in favor? Pose. Motion carried. Thank you. Under unfinished business, this is the second public hearing for minor amendment to this capital improvements element, the CIE, and the short-term work program, and consideration for adoption.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members.
You doing alright?
Doing fine, thank you.
Good.
Yes, we would like to inform the public that the city has produced a minor amendment to the capital improvements element and the short-term work program, and portions of the 2016 comp plan, to welcome community input on any issues related to these documents, and to ask the council to adopt the minor amendment. And I'll be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Gray? Anyone? Okay, this was, this is the second public hearing.
Yes, sir.
So this is a public hearing?
It is a public hearing, and then I would ask for adoption, please, after that.
Right, after the public hearing. So anyone here would like to come forward and speak to the issue of the minor amendments to the CIE and the short-term work program? This is a public hearing. Close the public hearing, seeing no one come forward, and then I'll ask for a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. We adopt the minor improvements amendments as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor? Pose. Motion carried. Thank you, sir. The next is status reports on 280 West Washington, 18 Berry Avenue, 6 Glen Street, and 15 Elm Circle.
Yes, all these are progressing pretty nicely, except for one, 15 Elm Circle. Actually, the repairs on that will be done very soon, be dropping off the list. 6 Glen Street is progressing very nicely. 280 West Washington, slow progress, but there has been progress. 18 Berry, nothing is happening there. Resolution deadline on that property will be coming up in about two weeks, and I will update council on the status of that property at that time.
Any questions on these status reports? Alright, no action needed at this time. We'll move on. You're still up with 33 Hardwood Street?
So this property was brought before council about last summer. There have been several extensions granted. The issue here is that the property is to be sold, and the family has not been able to settle on the distribution of the funds. I've been dealing with one of the family members, Miss Jenny Smith, and she is asking for another extension and wanted to come today to update you on the status of where this, of where this stands with the family.
Question, Ms. Smith is here today?
Yes. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Can we just state your name to the record, please?
My name is Jenny Quinn Smith.
Alright, and you were going to possibly give us an update on where you are with the resolution of this property?
Yes. First, I want to thank you for giving me the extension that you have. I'm still locating some of the heirs. I think it's three more heirs that have not sent their forms in yet. The property has been sold, but we can't release it until all the heirs release their paperwork. But the property has been sold.
Okay. Absolutely. Are the heirs located within Newnan County or?
Some of them are located outside of County County, and I can't, well, some of them are located outside of County County, and they are a little slow about taking care of business. But I'm doing all I can to reach them, because I don't talk to them very often, but I'm doing all I can to reach them. And I would like another extension.
How much time do you think you need, Mr.?
Um, maybe another 30 days, maybe, because I'm getting exhausted from dealing with all of this.
So let me look at this, let's look at the calendar, see where the last meeting in March is. That's the 24th. March 1st, April. April. 1st of April.
Yeah.
That's two months. It'll be either April 14th or February 24th.
April, how about April? I think would be good.
April 14th should be one of them.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion and a second made to give you another extension until April the 14th. We've chosen that date because that's a day that we will be here at the same time, 2:30. So that's the, that's the motion we'll have on the floor, and I'll call the question if there are any comments or discussion. All those in favor? Pose. Motion carried. So we'll give you another extension until April the 14th.
Thank you very much, and that's my birthday, anyway.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is to consider executing resolution to abandon certain public right-of-way known as St. Charles Place, located within the Parkside Village subdivision. Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council. You may recall, back in November, you had this item request come before you. You directed staff to go back and make it so. And so we're coming back with, the survey's been prepared. The, what used to be curb and gutter and pavements, all been taken up, has been sod, and we're just asking you to execute the resolution and let the property be divided and added to the adjoining property owners, as illustrated in the survey.
Alright, any questions, staff?
Some moves.
Second. Motion is second. We execute the resolution as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor? Pose. Motion carried. That ends our regular agenda today. Is anyone here who's come, who has an item, excuse me, this off agenda, this is your opportunity to come forward. Come forward, please. State your name for the record.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Cynthia Bennett. I'm here on behalf of the Noonan Cowida Chamber to express gratitude and appreciation on behalf of a collaboration of institutions here in our community that are responsible for Cowida Works. In front of you, you'll see this year's guidebook that was distributed to the teachers and the students who have participated in the program. This is a talent development program, and as I said, it's in its third year. We extended hosting the students for three days. We hosted six middle schools, public middle schools, and three of the community's private middle schools, and that was nearly 2,000 students and teachers who went through the CEC and participated in this talent development exposition, very interactive, very hands-on. On page 29, you will see the world of public safety, and I would especially like to thank the members of the City of Noonan Fire Safety and the City of Noonan Police Force for their participation. The vehicles and the personnel interacting with eighth graders is quite a sight to see. So thank you for the few moments, and again, I'd like to express our appreciation, and we look forward to 2021.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate that. Thank you for supporting the program. Appreciate that very much. Anyone else have anything else off agenda? Council members have anything today?
Yes, sir.
Go around. I don't.
Actually, I do. I am not wearing red today because I've changed my emphasis or anything. I am wearing red today. I'm wearing red today for go red or limit heart disease. February is heart disease, wear it in the month, and I just wanted to make sure the public is checking out the American Heart Association website to find out more information about heart disease.
Thank you. I have nothing today.
Nothing.
Okay, I understand we have no reason for an executive session this afternoon, so I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion is second. We adjourn. All those in favor? Pose. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We are here.